All right, call the meeting to order at seven oh three. Couldn't have everyone please stay up for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, any citizens comments? All right, first order of new business, I know Craig Genualdo's in the building. A donation from the hockey boosters. Yeah, so just a donation from the hockey boosters, Craig, if you wanna step up, say a couple words.
So, as part of our uniform contract that began roughly four or five years ago, I don't know exactly when, when the district said that they would start to pay uniforms instead of put, instead of putting the burden on the boosters and parents and stuff. We've been phasing in uniforms for the sports over the years, we're almost through them all. And it's been great. The, several years ago, we bought hockey uniforms and Adidas had just started making hockey uniforms and we went with the best sizing we knew. At the time, we were a mostly JV team as we were phasing into varsity and growing the program. We have a need now where we had some big athletes, some bigger, stronger athletes, and we need some larger shirts. Hockey uniforms are expensive and I told them that they weren't up as part of the cycle, we gotta go through all the teams first. So, the boosters wanted to donate some money so that we could get, I believe it's six home uniforms, six road uniforms. So that, all with bigger sizes. Additionally, we've also had more athletes each season since then. So, what this does is not only does it allow those bigger athletes to have things that fit them, it also allows us to outfit our complete JV team rather than have a separate shoddy six-year-old set of JV uniforms. And so, it's all ready to go, we have the sizes and the numbers, but we haven't started the order because we wanted to see, make sure this was okay first.
Sounds great to me, anyone?
No, that sounds great, would you like the motion now?
Yeah, please.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the Hamilton Wenham Hockey Boosters donation in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars to order six or a total of twelve jerseys for hockey.
Second. All those in favor? And I think there was one other one regarding, or no?
What is it, I don't see.
So, I think, so the hockey, so the hockey parents wanted to do a program similar to what some of the other sports do. I think that, I'm pretty sure that's on the agenda, we wanted to.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
So, we'll have to, if they could just, if they wanna do it, just send some information like they, like the soccer boosters did.
Yeah. Do you have a copy of the hockey booster? Uh, I don't, cuz they've never done one. Okay. They're, you know, I have the football one, which is, so I thought that was on the agenda, my apologies. I'll make sure it's on for next time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig.
So, they should know, like the soccer people bring like a list of people they believe are going to be their donors, so they should have that ready, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, now the science for, from scientists for it.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from New England Biolabs to Cutler School in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars for the fourth and fifth grade students to experience nine science lessons from science, from scientists for, over the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year.
Second. All those in favor?
It's nice that New England Biolabs does that for, you know, local communities.
Yeah, and well, the parent, the person who works there too. She's, she's also a Cutler mother, parent, and also, well, lives in my neighborhood.
Nice. There's a lot of smart people who work there.
All right. So, at this point, we're going to vote to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation to return to open session, and then return to open session for executive session, purpose number three. Peter?
Yes, I agree.
Stacy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes, all right, so we'll move to executive session. All right.
All right, so we're back in the open session, eight nineteen. Up next on the agenda, excuse me, of Student Services Presentation by Stacy Busek. Whenever you're ready, Stacy.
First of all, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm looking forward to providing you information through my presentation regarding the Student Services Department for FY20. Before I start, I do want to give some shout outs and thank yous to Elaine Rogal, Sue Hallinan, and Jennifer Hansen, who are our Student Services Administrative Assistants. I want to thank them for all their hard work in keeping our office running. I also want to thank Elaine specifically for completing all the data gathering requests that I sent her way during the process of putting this together. I also want to thank Maureen Smith, our Elementary Special Education Coordinator, who is here with me tonight, and Lindsay Govern, our Secondary Special Education Coordinator. They're the ones who work day in and day out with our parents and our staff and administrators on behalf of our special education students. I also want to thank the Central Office Cabinet for their help in framing and organizing this presentation. So I have three focus areas for tonight. The first one being the increasing demand for specialized student services in the district. This is not unique to Hamilton Wenham. It has become a state and also national trend. This increase in demand correlates with our increases in fiscal needs and increases in responsibility to ensure we are making fiscally responsible decisions. This also means we need to pay attention to our programmatic and staffing strategy. We need to ensure that we're effectively supporting our students and our staff. After my presentation tonight, we're fortunate to have the CPAT co-chairs, Lindsay Whitman and Becky Bonafont, presenting. So I would ask that the committee hold all of their questions until after their presentation. And so just jot anything down so you don't forget. So this is what we're all about. We're about educating the whole child. And our focus should always be on what is best for our students, which means, of course, the whole child. We need to remember that each of our students comes with their own unique individual needs, and we need to ensure that we are proposing and providing services to meet those needs. They need to gain meaningful educational benefit from what we are providing. We are also responsible for the education of students with disabilities identified eligible for special education services from the age of three to twenty-two. What I do want to say moving forward is while we are working to meet the needs of our special education students, and with my presentation, I'll be talking about a lot of information, but with that, we also need to ensure for confidentiality. So there may be questions that you want to ask later on or information you want that I can't provide during this meeting, just to protect the privacy of our students and families. So with our responsibility to meeting the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students, we also have to work towards preparing students for college and/or employment and to be active members of the community. So we do strive and try to focus on educating our students in our community, but with that, we also need to ensure that what we're providing for our students, we're also providing our staff with the necessary tools and training to support the whole child. So here are our overall responsibilities. We need to provide a free and appropriate public education within the least restrictive environment. It needs to be reasonably calculated to meet their needs, and each child has unique needs, and it needs to be meaningfully beneficial to them. Least restrictive environment can have different meanings for different students. So a full inclusion environment for one student isn't going to meet the needs of another student who may need something more, whether it be a substantially separate placement or up to a residential. Most of our students in our district, though, are provided with services through a full inclusion program. If we can't provide the services for a student and if they don't meet meaningful benefit and are making progress, we have to create or locate. We have worked at creating programs over the past couple of years or few years. We've also had to locate, which means that's when we're going to out-of-district placements. We need to ensure that state and federal special education regulations are implemented, and we also need to be mindful of programmatic and fiscal responsibility when we're determining services. So here are special education population numbers over the last five years. Fifth year, FY20 included here. When you look at this, what you'll see is we have continued to experience an increase in our special education populations. Since FY16, that's on the chart, we have been historically below the state percentage of special education students. However, we have been demonstrating a higher growth rate than the state each year. And so based on the increases at the district level in comparison with the rate of increases each year at the state level, we can surmise that the FY20 data, which isn't out yet from the state, has exceeded the state percentage. So while districts find additional students eligible throughout the school year, an important note regarding our increases this year in particular are that we had twenty new unanticipated special education students come into our district. So that bumped up our student population from original numbers when we left in June. This was a combination of school choice students and move-ins to the district. Twenty is a lot. There's a combination of programming needs within this mix of twenty, including out-of-district, and higher levels of needs at the building level. In the previous four years, we've typically had between eight and thirteen new special education students each year. So this was a higher year for us. With more students, there's also what we have seen is high evaluation and referral rates. So these numbers are based on initial referrals to special education. There's a mix in here. There's parent referrals, there's school-based referrals, and then we have referrals from outside agencies such as early intervention. So we have, in the past three years, we've seen an increase from FY16 that's pretty substantial. We've stayed pretty close in FY18 and FY19. But what's similar throughout all of the years is with all of the evaluations we're doing, we have about a fifty percent eligibility finding rate. I put this up here because sometimes we forget some of the other things that come with special education. And one of the things that impacts the district with high numbers of evaluations is it's taking resources away from things like providing additional supports to students because the evaluators need time to not only evaluate the student, which could take from an hour to a few hours to several, depending on the evaluations required and depending on the level of the student, but there also is time in analyzing, writing evaluation reports, and then physically meeting as a team. So this has an impact as well in terms of how we are being able to allocate resources across the district. With our students that have been found eligible, these are kind of the most common eligibility categories or disability categories that we're finding students eligible in. Health impairment is twenty-seven percent. That's the highest. Most of our health impairment students are students with ADD or ADHD. Specific learning disability is our next highest category of finding, and that's at twenty-one percent right now. And the majority of those students are coming to us with reading, spelling, and writing deficits. So they're being found eligible in the literacy areas. Autism is another percentage, fifteen percent in this district. Communication is thirteen percent. I put emotional impairment and neurological impairment in here just because what's interesting about these numbers is they've doubled over the past four years. So in FY16, we were at four percent. Now we're sitting at eight percent. So there's shifts in our populations, which mean shifts that we need to make in staffing and programming. So with the increases in our special education population, it also means there are increased needs and costs associated with supporting our students and making sure that they're successful in our learning environments. Staffing, so we've worked over the past couple of years to reallocate staffing, FTEs, based on student need. But at the same time, we've also had to add staffing. So we have combinations of sometimes our staffing becomes a net zero as we move FTEs to meet special education students. So with the increases in our special education population, it also means there are increased needs and increases in responsibility to ensure we are making fiscally responsible decisions. This also means we need to pay attention to our programmatic and staffing strategy. We need to ensure that we're effectively supporting our students and our staff. After my presentation tonight, we're fortunate to have the CPAT co-chairs, Lindsay Whitman and Becky Bonafont, presenting. So I would ask that the committee hold all of their questions until after their presentation. And so just jot anything down so you don't forget. So this is what we're all about. We're about educating the whole child. And our focus should always be on what is best for our students, which means, of course, the whole child. We need to remember that each of our students comes with their own unique individual needs, and we need to ensure that we are proposing and providing services to meet those needs. They need to gain meaningful educational benefit from what we are providing. We are also responsible for the education of students with disabilities identified eligible for special education services from the age of three to twenty-two. What I do want to say moving forward is while we are working to meet the needs of our special education students, and with my presentation, I'll be talking about a lot of information, but with that, we also need to ensure for confidentiality. So there may be questions that you want to ask later on or information you want that I can't provide during this meeting, just to protect the privacy of our students and families. So with our responsibility to meeting the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students, we also have to work towards preparing students for college and/or employment and to be active members of the community. So we do strive and try to focus on educating our students in our community, but with that, we also need to ensure that what we're providing for our students, we're also providing our staff with the necessary tools and training to support the whole child. So here are our overall responsibilities. We need to provide a free and appropriate public education within the least restrictive environment. It needs to be reasonably calculated to meet their needs, and each child has unique needs, and it needs to be meaningfully beneficial to them. Least restrictive environment can have different meanings for different students. So a full inclusion environment for one student isn't going to meet the needs of another student who may need something more, whether it be a substantially separate placement or up to a residential. Most of our students in our district, though, are provided with services through a full inclusion program. If we can't provide the services for a student and if they don't meet meaningful benefit and are making progress, we have to create or locate. We have worked at creating programs over the past couple of years or a few years. We've also had to locate, which means that's when we're going to out-of-district placements. We need to ensure that state and federal special education regulations are implemented, and we also need to be mindful of programmatic and fiscal responsibility when we're determining services. So here are special education population numbers over the last five years. Fifth year, FY20 included here. When you look at this, what you'll see is we have continued to experience an increase in our special education populations. Since FY16, that's on the chart, we have been historically below the state percentage of special education students. However, we have been demonstrating a higher growth rate than the state each year. And so based on the increases at the district level in comparison with the rate of increases each year at the state level, we can surmise that the FY20 data, which isn't out yet from the state, has exceeded the state percentage. So while districts find additional students eligible throughout the school year, an important note regarding our increases this year in particular are that we had twenty new unanticipated special education students come into our district. So that bumped up our student population from original numbers when we left in June. This was a combination of school choice students and move-ins to the district. Twenty is a lot. There's a combination of programming needs within this mix of twenty, including out-of-district, and higher levels of needs at the building level. In the previous four years, we've typically had between eight and thirteen new special education students each year. So this was a higher year for us. With more students, there's also what we have seen is high evaluation and referral rates. So these numbers are based on initial referrals to special education. There's a mix in here. There's parent referrals, there's school-based referrals, and then we have referrals from outside agencies such as early intervention. So we have, in the past three years, we've seen an increase from FY16 that's pretty substantial. We've stayed pretty close in FY18 and FY19. But what's similar throughout all of the years is with all of the evaluations we're doing, we have about a fifty percent eligibility finding rate. I put this up here because sometimes we forget some of the other things that come with special education. And one of the things that impacts the district with high numbers of evaluations is it's taking resources away from things like providing additional supports to students because the evaluators need time to not only evaluate the student, which could take from an hour to a few hours to several, depending on the evaluations required and depending on the level of the student, but there also is time in analyzing, writing evaluation reports, and then physically meeting as a team. So this has an impact as well in terms of how we are being able to allocate resources across the district. With our students that have been found eligible, these are kind of the most common eligibility categories or disability categories that we're finding students eligible in. Health impairment is twenty-seven percent. That's the highest. Most of our health impairment students are students with ADD or ADHD. Specific learning disability is our next highest category of finding, and that's at twenty-one percent right now. And the majority of those students are coming to us with reading, spelling, and writing deficits. So they're being found eligible in the literacy areas. Autism is another percentage, fifteen percent in this district. Communication is thirteen percent. I put emotional impairment and neurological impairment in here just because what's interesting about these numbers is they've doubled over the past four years. So in FY16, we were at four percent. Now we're sitting at eight percent. So there's shifts in our populations, which mean shifts that we need to make in staffing and programming. So with the increases in our special education population, it also means there are increased needs and costs associated with supporting our students and making sure that they're successful in our learning environments. Staffing, so we've worked over the past couple of years to reallocate staffing, FTEs, based on student need. But at the same time, we've also had to add staffing. So we have combinations of sometimes our staffing becomes a net zero as we move FTEs to meet If we can't provide the services for a student, and if they don't meet meaningful benefit and are making progress, we have to create or locate. We have worked at creating programs over the past couple of years or few years. We've also had to locate, which means that's when we're going to add a district placements. We need to ensure that state and federal special education regulations are implemented, and we also need to be mindful of programmatic and fiscal responsibility when we're determining So here are special education population numbers over the last five years. Fifth year, FY '20 included here. When you look at this, what you'll see is we have continued to experience an increase in our special education populations. Since FY '16, that's on the chart, we have been historically below the state percentage of special education students. However, we have been demonstrating a higher growth rate than the state each year. And so based on the increases at the district level in comparison with the rate of increases each year at the state level, we can surmise that the FY '20 data, which isn't out yet from the state, has exceeded the state percentage. So while districts find additional students eligible throughout the school year, an important note regarding our increases this year in particular are that we had 20 new unanticipated special education students come into our district. So that bumped up our student population from original numbers when we left in June. This was a combination of school choice students and move-ins to the district. Twenty is a lot. There's a combination of programming needs within this mix of 20, including out-of-district, and higher levels of needs at the building level. In the previous four years, we've typically had between eight and 13 new special education students each year. So this was a higher year for us. With more students, there's also what we have seen is high evaluation and referral rates. So these numbers are based on initial referrals to special education. There's a mix in here. There's parent referrals, there's school-based referrals, and then we have referrals from outside agencies such as early intervention. So we have, in the past three years, we've seen an increase from FY '16 that's pretty substantial. We've stayed pretty close in FY '18 and FY '19. But what's similar throughout all of the years is with all of the evaluations we're doing, we have about a 50% eligibility finding rate. I put this up here because sometimes we forget some of the other things that come with special education. And one of the things that impacts the district with high numbers of evaluations is it's taking resources away from things like providing additional supports to students, because the evaluators need time to not only evaluate the student, which could take from an hour to a few hours to several, depending on the evaluations required and depending on the level of the student, but there also is time in analyzing, writing evaluation reports, and then physically meeting as a team. So this has an impact as well in terms of how we're being able to allocate resources across the district. With our students that have been found eligible, these are kind of the most common eligibility categories or disability categories that we're finding students eligible in. Health impairment is 27%. That's the highest. Most of our health impairment students are students with ADD or ADHD. Specific learning disability is our next highest category of finding, and that's at 21% right now. And the majority of those students are coming to us with reading, spelling, and writing deficits. So they're being found eligible in the literacy areas. Autism is another percentage, 15% in this district. Communication is 13%. I put emotional impairment and neurological impairment in here just because what's interesting about these numbers is they've doubled over the past four years. So in FY '16, we were at 4%, now we're sitting at 8%. So there's shifts in our populations, which mean shifts that we need to make in staffing So with the increases in our special education population, it also means there are increased needs and costs associated with supporting our students and making sure that they're successful in our learning environments. Staffing. So we've worked over the past couple of years to reallocate staffing, FTEs, based on student need. But at the same time, we've also had to add staffing. So we have combinations of sometimes our staffing becomes a net zero as we move FTEs to meet student needs, and sometimes it's been a cost to the district. Contracted services is another area that has increased in cost. So examples of contracted services that we utilize in the district is we contract for BCBA services. That can include consulting. It can include direct services, and it can include doing functional behavioral assessments for some of our students. ABA providers for the home is another contracted service, although I will say that we have been trying to create that staffing support in district, which equates to a cost savings for us. So we've been working to build that. Vision services, orientation and mobility, augmentative and alternative communication, whether it's evaluations or consult, and also speech and language services are some of the things that we are contracting for. Another one is transportation. So with increases in out-of-district or increases in special education students who need transportation to access school because of their disability, that creates an increased cost to our transportation lines. Extended school year. So our summer programming or extended school year programs increases in students equates to increases in summer programming needs. Extended day is another one. We have students who require supports to participate in extracurricular activities, whether it's sports, musicals, plays, chorus, any of those. If they require the support to participate, we need to provide it. Professional development. So as our student needs increase, the need to provide training to staff and to meet our students' unique needs increases as well. We are also, we're working to build our capacity to provide more specialized programming to our students. So that also comes with an increase in the need for funding to do that. Other things that impact our professional development line are when we have new staffing. So this year in particular, we had a lot of turnover in staff at the elementary, middle, and high school level. That equates to having to provide them with specialized training that we're providing in terms of programming to students. And then, of course, tuition. Out-of-district tuition also increases as the needs of students increase. So what do we consider when making student-centered decisions? When we're looking at changing learning environments, if we need, if the least restrictive environment requires more services and becomes a more restrictive environment, some of the things that we have to think about before making these decisions or while we're making them is are we meeting the level of support our students require? They need to be able to access and learn and demonstrate progress. So are we meeting that? Have we maximized the services at the building level? And have we maximized services at the district level? So we're always looking at those pieces. Is our physical space conducive to meeting the needs of our students? Sometimes our students' needs can't be met based on our physical spaces. So that's something we really have to take into consideration when we're planning for programming for students. And then finally, it's always about what is in the best interest of our students. We always need to keep that at the forefront when we are making decisions. This is our current programs and our program populations at each of our schools. So this is what we have in district right now. We've worked over the years that I've been here and previously at creating programming. And so there are some programs that are pretty consistent across the elementary schools, one of them being the Therapeutic Learning Center. So there is support in place to provide therapeutic interventions for students who require that. So it's that social, emotional, behavioral component. Those are consistent across the elementary schools. And at the high school in FY '19, we reallocated an academic support program and teacher to create a therapeutic learning center at the high school because we found a need for therapeutic supports at the high school. We were losing more kids because they were requiring therapeutic programs. The middle school, we have a different model. We did a reallocation and change of a program there, and we have a special education teacher who has behavioral consultation expertise. And so he's providing the behavioral support in a different way that works for their building. So we're constantly looking at what's meeting the needs of the students and what is conducive to supporting those students in a particular environment. We have our language-based program at the elementary, middle, and high school level, which is located at Cutler. We have our academic support programs across all of the schools. Winthrop has a lot of programs in their building. They have our preschool program, which this year we added a third classroom because we have more students coming in at age three requiring specialized services. There's asterisks there for FY '20 and FY '21. So our FY '20s are actuals as we're standing here today. Our FY '21s are projections, and those could change at any time, as could our actuals to date change at any time. The preschool, the numbers reflected there are just our special education students. It's not the peers that go with it. We work on a seven to eight ratio, seven special education students to eight peers. We have to date 18 students across the three classrooms now. We anticipate to be adding four more students through the year, and this is based on conversations and connections that Maureen keeps with early intervention. So we're talking and finding out who's a potential coming, you know, down the road, who's turning three when. This doesn't compensate for any unknowns, who, you know, students who are not in early intervention, and then parents send in a referral who may end up needing programming. Our third classroom, we have four peers right now, and we have the potential to add four more peers. So we're building that. Trying to think if there's anything else here. Winthrop also has, they have our intensive learning program. They have our castle program, which is another program for students requiring a significant amount of academic, social, and emotional support with some integration into the gen-ed classroom. So that's what we're looking at right now. Our academic support numbers are high. The increases at the middle and high school are just based on, you know, you have three elementary schools going to one building and moving forward. Ideally, what we'd like to see as we get into the secondary levels is our numbers starting to decrease, meaning we've, the kids have developed the skills they need to be successful without specialized instruction. So that's always our goal. So this is where we have been over the previous five years with out-of-district budgeting. What this shows between the projections, so you'll see the tuitions projected, which are numbers, the projections are numbers based on what I give and my previous, the previous Student Services Director gives when we're starting the budget process. You'll see that there's a difference between the projected, what's budgeted, and then what the actuals are. So this says, excuse me, a few things. Special education is volatile and a moving target, and it's clear with our out-of-districts that we can do the best we can with what we know to make projections, but you can always guarantee in special education, there's going to be additions at some point based on student What this also says is, excuse me, that these numbers get impacted by some variables such as move-ins, the need for placement changes based on increasing needs of the students, and there's also a component of unilateral placements that falls into this as well. What it also shows is as the difference between the projected and the actuals, and then the budgeted and the actuals, also means that we need to find the funding in other places. I will say one thing about the FY '20. It's unique in that in FY '20, we budgeted for the projected. So our projected numbers and our projected tuitions were budgeted. This year, we had several unexpected. It was move-ins and program changes in placements that impacted where we are sitting currently. So one of the things with the increases in the actual, it creates a need to take more from circuit breaker reserves. So that's an impact of this as well. And this continues to leave less funds available for the other unexpected that could happen. So we try as best we can to budget as closely as we can with the projections. But again, it's a moving target, and it's volatile, and it's kind of very difficult to be absolutely accurate from projection to budget to the final actual. So how are we supporting the increasing demands in student services? We're continuously monitoring student needs, and we're taking action on those needs through meaningful analysis. But we also need to keep in mind that, again, special education services and programming is not negotiable in terms of our requirement to meet the individual needs of the students as determined by the special education teams. And in order to do this, it can equate to additional funding needs. And again, we do our best to analyze need and staffing requirements and reallocate rather than add, as we're able to do. So at the elementary level in FY '17, FY '18, FY '19, and FY '20, we added programming and staffing. In FY '17, that was when we added the therapeutic learning centers. Those weren't additional costs. They were a reallocation of FTEs that we had. In FY '18, we added the castle program. That was an added staff cost. In FY '19, we added another language-based teacher to our language-based program at Cutler. That was a reallocation. In FY '20, we had to add additional preschool classrooms, so that third preschool classroom. That also equated to needing to add a teaching assistant to support that classroom. Those became additions. At the middle school level in FY '19 and FY '20, we looked very carefully at realigning staffing and programming, and we did add some staffing. So at the middle school, our added staffing was a .5 reading teacher in FY '19, which was part of the proposal back in January of 2018. And we needed that due to the numbers of students that were going up to the middle school still requiring reading services. It was, at that time, it was over 30 students. So we needed that. We have changed programming at the middle school. So again, we're looking at student need, and we're shifting programs to meet the needs of students in light of their disability and other supports they may require. At the high school in FY '19, we added programming and staffing. And I know this came up as a recent question in terms of that. But before, again, I have a next slide that will explain kind of that proposal and where we stand now in terms of our investment in that. But I will say, one thing we did do in FY, for FY '19, is we looked at and analyzed across the district all of our teaching assistance and student needs, and we were able to, based on increased programming we needed at the high school, reallocate teaching assistance from the middle school. We took three FTEs from the middle school and moved them up to the high school, which was, I think, significant in kind of looking at our resources and where we needed them most without shortchanging someone else. So the high school piece, expanding in-house programming. We made a significant investment in FY '19. I came to you in January 2018 and asked for several positions. We asked for a 1.0 FTE language-based program teacher at the high school. We did not have a language-based program at the high school, and when I came in FY '18, we lost students because they were in programming at the middle school, and then there was nothing for them at the high school. Those losses in turn became tuitions in out-of-district. We added a 1.0 intensive learning academic skills program. We called it at the time a life skills program. We shifted the name a bit so we could be supportive of a range of students who fall into the sports, supports that they need at that level. With this, we had, we requested this because we had an out-of-district student we wanted to bring back to the district, and we also had students who would be moving up as we looked at projections through the years. I did ask at the time for an out-of-district team chairperson. There isn't necessarily a cost benefit in terms of we saved on tuitions, but there is a benefit because with the increasing number of out-of-district students, there's an increasing need for team meetings, for monitoring. And with this position, we're able to keep a closer watch on our students and look at, are they making progress? Can we now bring them back? So there's a level of consistent monitoring. This team chairperson also supports secondary special education meetings because the increasing numbers of students that we have. And again, we did ask for a .5 FTE reading teacher, which I had spoken about previously. So when we came to you in FY '18, in January of 2018, our estimated cost savings over four years for the two teaching positions, the language-based and the intensive learning, we told you we were going to save $2,210,000 over four years based on looking at the students. If we didn't have the programming, they'd have to be placed out, and we looked at the costs for tuition, and also we took into account costs for staffing. To date, after 1.3 years, our cost savings is $735,000. So we are on track to meet what we said we would do in terms of cost savings. And based on our projections, we will probably exceed that, particularly with the language-based program. So the investment was worth it in the end. We have been able to keep students in district where they deserve to be, and we've also created some cost savings in out-of-district tuitions. So taking into consideration the increasing demands for specialized student services and the fiscal responsibility, what are our next steps? We have, we've developed department goals. So myself, Maureen, and Lindsay are working on and have committed to goals that are going to be focused on reviewing our language-based programs at the elementary, middle, and high school level. There's always room for enhancement. So we're going to be doing an analysis of data. We're going to review the structures, the staffing, what our assessments look like, and what specialized programs we're using. And then we'll come back with recommendations in terms of staffing needs or, you know, talk about structural changes we may decide that we need to do. So again, we picked this because we're losing some students within our out-of-district based on specific learning disability categories where we can meet them in district. So how do we kind of look at and enhance what we're already doing? And I will say, we have great staff across the district, and I do feel strongly that our programs are good. We're also going to do a case review of approximately six out-of-district student files. And what we're going to do is review all the data we have linked to those students, and we're going to complete a root cause analysis for each of those cases. We want to look at the determination of what led to the out-of-district placements, and we want to be able to come back and provide district recommendations provided on our findings using specific students and using specific data. What do we need to do differently? And this isn't just about special ed. It's about gen ed too. As a district, what do we need to do differently to keep more students in district than are going out? And again, we're always looking to enhance our programs. We're continuously talking about it. And I think that evidenced by some of the actions that have already been taken, that we've been able to show that we're taking student services and student needs seriously and making sure and ensuring that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. We also want to focus more on collaboration and close communication with families and the CPAC. And what's great now is for a number of years, we haven't had a fully active CPAC. It's being rejuvenated. We have Lindsay Whitman and Becky Bonafont, who are going to be presenting on what's going on with CPAC to date and the plans for moving forward this year. So we're excited for that. More next steps. Staffing. So we're in budget seizing and we're looking at all of our data and information. So based on our increased need and some assumptions we're already making as we're starting to sift through things, I will probably be coming back asking for support for increased staffing in certain areas. Some of my concerns right now are meeting the needs of our students with reading challenges and writing challenges and also our social-emotional learning needs. Those are kind of some high priorities. Professional development. We have not kept pace with funding for professional development and special ed. When you look at the students we have in district and the numbers and the needs they are demonstrating and displaying, there's more work we can do around professional development to better support all of our students, whether it's specific programming for literacy skills, whether it's specific programming for social-emotional learning support. I think there's more professional development coming down the pike that we need. And again, the challenge with this is cost increase. So bringing consultants in is not cheap. Sending staff out to certain professional development is not cheap either. So we're really looking at too, with this professional development piece, who are our resources in district first? And how can we utilize the knowledge of our professional staff in district to support other staff? So we're always looking at that as well. And we'll continue to look at that and kind of encourage staff who have the knowledge to share it. As a district and in thinking about the challenges in special ed, we really need to be looking at our tiered systems of support at the general education level, particularly in the areas of literacy and again, social-emotional learning. I think these are two areas where our staff need more support and we can be enhancing our systems and levels of support to better meet the needs of all of our students. Kind of trying to support the challenges and behaviors and help students gain skills before they become referrals to special education. So I think we need to be looking at what we're doing for tier-one instruction and what we're doing for tier-two interventions. I think we need to question, is what we are doing adequate and effective? Do we have the right assessments in place to analyze the effectiveness of what we're providing for students? And what training and tools do our teachers need to better support students? So that's something that we... I think there needs to be a conversation at some point regarding some form of a reserve fund to kind of support the increases beyond what's budgeted as we go through school years. I think that each year I've been here and looking at previous, like there's a lot of lines within the budget that we're overspending. And it's not because we're being reckless, we're being very thoughtful in our spending. It's just, again, our needs are increasing. So I'm hopeful through the process this year and the budget process that we'll be able to think a little differently about some of our funding and line allocations. That's all I have for you. And again, I will take questions at the end of the CPAC presentation. So thank you for having me. And then I am going to put your presentation up for you guys. Do you want it just in slide? Or is it on presenter view? You got that. So I'd like to introduce Lindsay and Becky, who have, I've been so excited to finally have CPAC co-chairs to work with. And they've been great. They're coming in and kind of with limited information, really helping to rebuild the CPAC for us. And they've been enthusiastic about it. And we've already had some things happen in the district to support our special education families and families with students with disabilities, so.
Thank you, Stacy and Maureen.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Whitman.
I'm Becky Bonifat.
We're the co-chairs of the CPAC, which stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council. There hasn't been an active one in the Hamilton One in District for a couple years. And as Stacy alluded to, we are the new co-chairs, trying to sort of reinvigorate the group. So just to level set on what are... The reason for us existing is that we're a group of parents and guardians of special education students, so that's IEP as well as 504 students and other interested parties. We meet regularly as a group to provide information and support to each other and provide input into the policies and programs that affect our children. So that includes meeting with Stacy regularly, as we have already started doing, which has been great, as well as act as an advisory group to you, the school committee. And so we want to circle back to that advisory role at the end of our very brief presentation to talk a little bit more and get your input on what that means from your standpoint. Do I just hit forward? Yep, okay. So just briefly, our goals, we are on a learning curve. As Stacy mentioned, there hadn't been one. And so now we're looking, we're trying to put one in place. So really this year, our main goals are to build awareness and engagement in the district community. As a parent, actually a Bucker parent here at the school, having gone through the IEP process with one of my children last year, had no idea there was such a thing as a CPAC or what it even could have provided in terms of help and support for us going through that process. We were very fortunate that within our own family community that we had enough help and support to sort of successfully navigate the process. But in retrospect, would have been fabulous to have known about that and leveraged that support within our immediate community from other families. So really, building the awareness, we're trying, you know, literally at soccer games and things like that, like, hey, have you heard what I'm doing? And building awareness that way. We are starting to have regular membership meetings. We want to have more speakers and workshops while being realistic that we're still on a learning curve. We are looking to fill some executive and non-executive roles and really build that infrastructure we need in order to provide those feedback loops, those very necessary feedback loops from families in the community to Stacy, to you, and back and forth. We're really the conduit for that. And so we have a mailing list and we want to create a website or some sort of visual presence for families to find more information, connect more with MassPAC, which is sort of the Massachusetts umbrella, as well as other leadership and other area CPAC communities, and establish some sort of financial infrastructure to support some of this. Becky's going to talk to you about what we've accomplished so far.
We wanted to kind of more specifically dig into what we've done so far this year. Lindsay and I have been elected at the end of last year, met with Stacy regularly over the summer, and then hit the ground running. So in terms of the executive, there's Lindsay and I as co-chairs, Kristen Crockett as her secretary, and we have an open position we're currently looking to fill for our treasurer. We first sent a survey out. It came from the district, but then was clear if you wanted to continue to communicate with us, you have to opt into communication. So the first, the survey was first looking to collect emails for people who wanted to voluntarily hear from us. And then also, beyond that, what did they want to hear in terms of presentations? You can see in the appendix that we included a summary of some of those surveys. There was roughly forty respondents. Here is just kind of a highlight, most importantly, of what they wanted to hear from us, which we've already tackled some of the higher responding ones with the Parents' Rights Workshop. And then also informally, if they wanted to have coffee, and who doesn't? So we had mentioned already that we held the initial membership meeting in September. We had the Parents' Rights Workshop in October. Our next membership meeting's going to be on November 12th. We've reviewed and updated the bylaws. So Lindsay and I had spoken to what we felt were some relevant other districts to get a feel for what were the differences in where we were with our bylaws and their bylaws. We made some updates and they've already been reviewed by the membership and approved. And then lastly, an informational flyer has been created to hand out at the IEP and 504 meetings for new families just so that they can then be aware of us once they've signed on to the IEP and 504. So as Lindsay already kind of mentioned, that's where we're kind of looking to go, what we've already done. And then we really would like to hear from you guys in preliminary thoughts of what can we, as we talk to these families interested in special education, what can we bring back to you? What would you be interested in hearing from us? And then also, I guess, having us here, if you have any specific questions now.
So I've been a member of the CPAC before. And the only time, well, twice, once we spoke out against, just to point out some inaccuracies of statements made at a town meeting. But the other, there are policies around observing programs. And that was one area where it was, it's beneficial to get sort of like input from people who might want to do that. Like, is what we're asking working and reasonable and things like that? And we'll probably be reviewing that probably in the January or February timeframe, would be kind of my estimate, because it's in students and that's a long section and it's probably going to take us a while, but.
Observations of the special education programs, observations of what's going on in the classrooms and stuff like that?
Yeah, especially if you were someone who had been proposed to be in a particular program. You know, and you wanted to see that program in action. We have a policy around that. We also have a policy, if you have an advocate, about how that process works. So if someone had feedback, that would be something we would want to know.
Okay.
How do you guys make yourselves known to parents? Is there any kind of posting anywhere or?
How do we make ourselves known?
Yeah, how would a parent contact you if they didn't already know you existed?
Sure, I mean, so the district sent out an email initially at the beginning of the school year sort of announcing that we were a renewed organization, that our survey was part of that and announcing our first membership meeting. I think, well, I'll tell you what I think, I don't know exactly yet, because we're still learning. One is, I mean, literally, it is a small community, right? So it's been...
Word of mouth.
A little bit of word of mouth, but that's not the most, I mean, at the end of the day, that's, you know, within our own social circles and that's not really the right way to go about it. But at least was a starting point of, hey, I know, like, your kid is also in an IEP and like, did you know about this? And that's, and hey, can you tell other people and tell other people? So there's that, and it's a small community, and so that has some effectiveness. Becky had mentioned that we also put a flyer together that will be distributed to families in their IEP meetings. I have mine later this month, so I'll be checking to make sure that's there. Hint, hint. And so that's one way for new families that are coming in. People, we want to get a website up. We do have a Facebook page, but it's a private group, so you have to kind of know a little bit about it. And we also have an email address. So families that are new to the IEP process, hopefully what will happen, or the 504, hopefully what will happen is, in their IEP meeting, they get a flyer, they see there's an email address that says if you would like to join our mailing list. And we have now a MailChimp account, so we can be compliant with CAMSPAN laws. Then they have, they can email us and we say, great, we add you to the mailing list. And then that's how we basically, I mean, I just sent out an email this morning letting people know, reminding people about our meeting next week. We're wholly open to suggestions for how to better reach out to families, because that is like really the number one goal.
Have you actually tried utilizing the friends groups that exist, since they actually already have their own?
Yep.
Yes, so we reached out to each of them when we were doing our first membership meeting, just asking, not only introducing ourselves, but also then asking if they could help us with promoting that we were going to be getting together.
And so we did that, one of the other things I did this morning was also reaching out to the chairs and other people in the friends group saying, hey, can you add this to the mailing that's going out later this week for Bucker? I know, because I'm a parent. And the other sequence, I don't know all the communication sequences, but making sure that we're trying to get in on those. I think this fall, we sort of missed the window a little bit because we were still really trying to figure out what we needed to do. But going to the back-to-school nights and making, you know, the ed fund often has someone that's there representing the ed fund. We think that us or other people from the membership should have, you know, a minute and a half at the mic to say who we are and what we do, just to make that presence. One of the non-executive roles we're even trying to fill is to get people to be representatives within the individual schools because I think it's much easier to reach out to someone that you know within your school community if you have questions about something that can often be as sensitive as special ed. So we're trying to build that network of people.
Maybe even just putting a flyer on the bulletin boards at the school or even at the central administrative building?
Yeah, we can do that too. Good suggestion.
So I'm thinking far, not so far, but I'm thinking actually to a town meeting when we need to present a district budget to the voters. Given what we've heard from Stacy's presentation, which is very excellent, by the way, you're looking for opportunities, I wonder if, you know, if any of the proposals that Stacy's going to probably likely put forward for special ed, if it makes into the district's budget, if there's a way to sort of coordinate with CPAC to advocate for the budget? Because what we find is, at least what I found in the Hamilton side, is a real lack of understanding from not just the elected officials, but also the voters about what is in the budget and what the needs are. So I'm just putting a word out there, because we don't have the budget yet, but to, you know, put that in the ear, that, you know, if we need parent advocates for the district budget, that, you know, we can have some people speak on behalf of the need.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's something actually, we had spoken about in an early meeting.
Yeah.
My past practice has been, as I've been talking to CPAC and saying, here's what we're planning to do in this, for support. The other piece too, there are also the ears to the community age building and there may be things or information that they discover that we hadn't considered. So it is definitely a transparent collaborative process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I do want to thank Becky and Lindsay. They've been working really hard and they've had a lot of great ideas in how to get things moving forward to CPAC. So this is exciting for me because we've been missing this parent piece in the district since I've been here. I do want to say though, I need to thank Michelle. You have been very helpful too, when I first came in, in kind of helping with some of the CPAC stuff. And also, I can't forget, Lori Bernard has been very helpful and connected with them, as well as Tracy Hutchinson. And who else? Am I missing anybody? Yeah, so we have had support in kind of helping get things up and running, so I wanted to note that. I guess back to, do you have any questions for me?
I do, I kind of have several.
Okay.
I just want to know, you talked about a 2020 increase in choice and move-ins. How many of those are choice?
We had ten school choice move-ins of students on IEPs. This is not the norm. I kind of looked back at a couple of previous years and it's usually been maybe three here in one year, two in one year. I think this was a unique year and even as the summer was rolling and we were seeing files coming in, we were kind of getting nervous and we were kind of shocked. So it was ten school choice students coming in and then the others were move-ins. Or eleven, I'm sorry, need to correct that, eleven school choice and the other. school choice and the others were move-ins.
Eleven, okay. Do other districts refer to our school district, like the school choice type stuff, or no?
School choice is parent-driven. It's not district-driven. Um, I will have districts that call when they're looking for placements for students to see, do we have a program that can meet the students' needs? Um, we do have districts send referrals to us, and we'll review them and decide if we do have a program that meets their needs, and, and if not, um, let them know. But, do, other, like, districts call each other. We ask, because not every district has a program for every child, and so we really try to work to start at the public school level before we move into collaborative or private placements, so.
What's a therapeutic program at the high school? I guess I didn't know we had that at the high school.
Oh, it's, um, it's, it's great, and I, I have to give kudos to Kevin Blake, who is a special education teacher in that program, and Ally Trimby, who, um, is the school counselor. So, what we did is, we had, um, an FTE academic support, but we were seeing a need of, for students who needed more therapeutic support. There were some behaviors, and there were some emotional, um, challenges impacting their access. Um, and we had some students who just weren't engaged enough. And so, um, Kevin utilizes a lot of strategies to support the students while trying to work on the academic end of it, and then Ally works with the students. She will go into the program and do, um, kind of counseling activities with the group, and we'll meet with them individually as needed. It also becomes a space, if at any time the student is out in one of the regular ed or gen ed, um, areas, and just needs a place to go and kind of decompensate or think about things, it's there, too.
Okay.
So, again, that was, uh, what we did was, we looked at what are our needs, and what do we have, and, um, how do we reallocate, um, if we can, so. There's about, um, well, the numbers are there. There's about fifteen in that program right now.
Okay, um, also, we used to have another layer in the high school called the life skills. Has that hurt our high school by not having those three different levels?
Wasn't called life skills. No, it was called skills.
Skills, sorry, skills.
You had CP, and then inside of a CP class, it was supportive of special education.
We have a program that commensurate with life skills programming.
Yep.
That hasn't been in place since I've been here, the skills programs.
Yeah, it's been, they, we lost it about five years ago.
What the district has done is created more smaller group, um, opportunities and content areas. Um, we haven't, I mean, what we have done, if students need different types of supports in different environments, we've worked to try and create some of that in, in the building without creating a totally separate, and I will call it track, which, um, really, all of our kids should have the experience of working with typically developing peers. And I think what happens when you build programs like that for small group, um, lots of kids end up coming into it, and it's not small group anymore. Um, so, we are trying to work with supporting students within the gen ed populations as much as possible, supporting with academic support times and other programming that we've created.
I've also seen a lot of co-teaching going on in the high school.
We're, we're really trying to, um, kind of improve on that and create more opportunities. I think, um, I prefer, prefer co-teaching models, um, and, um, yeah, so it's, it's great, and it's great that staff want to engage in that. Um, the, if you take a, you look at the language-based program at the high school, they'll have, you know, academic support and some separate, um, learning time, but there's co-teaching happening for, for the content areas, yeah.
You talked about contracted services. What is the cost, um, year to year with contract services? Is there, um, what those costs are? I know there's a lot of things that go into that, but just what's the cost of that? Is there anything that we can bring in-house, so it's not contracted? Have a savings.
So, I'll, I'll give an example, and I had mentioned it earlier, um, home services needs. We have students that require home services for various reasons. Um, we have contracted out for the ABA services, um, at sixty-five dollars an hour. Um, we're able to hire ABA persons in district, and, and, I mean, our pool is small right now. We're, we're working to build it, but we can provide a range of twenty-five to thirty. So, we can provide the lower cost, because the persons going to private companies are not getting the sixty-five dollars an hour. Um, so, um, that's what we're looking at. So, we're looking at what can we bring back into district. Um, when we added the .5 reading teacher at the middle school in FY nineteen, we were actually contracting out for some specialized services to support reading development, and we have not had to do that, um, last year with the addition of that, or, or this year yet. So, so we're looking at those things. What staff in our district can we provide additional training for to eliminate that? Right now, we're contracting for speech and language services. Um, we've, we tried hiring for a position, and we weren't finding anybody, um, so we've had to contract. We're reposting that and looking at, um, that piece again, and do have some people now who have, um, applied. So, um, we're hoping, because, you know, we're, we're paying a lot more per hour for contracted service for speech and language, um, and it's always better to have your own staff for a variety of reasons. Um, one thing the district is doing, and I think we really need to rethink this, um, we are contracting for BCBA services, um, and that's a significant amount of money per hour. And I think having our own in-district staffing in that form provides a better level of service to all of our schools and our students. You have someone who's available when you need them, while also, like, getting to know our staff and our students better. So, that's another piece where we're kind of watching and doing, like, cap cost benefit analysis, 'cause there's a point where, you know, if you're exceeding costs in contracted services, where you can pull your own person in at less expense, um, that's when we'd be asking. So, we're, we're monitoring that. And again, we'd look at other things, too. It's not just the cost. It's how much more benefit will it be to our students and our staff? Did I answer all of your questions?
I have one more.
Okay.
As we're preparing our budget for next year, where do you see, within your budget, your piece, not your budget, your piece, that there could be a cost savings?
We're, we're looking at that and analyzing that now. I'm not sure. I, I'm not prepared to answer that. I mean, we're looking at everything. Um, the problem with the budget, um, if, if you look at kind of the end of year, we're, we're over, we've overspent in, in, in lines in the past, so, um, there's, there's several areas to look at. Can we do extended school ye- years, extended school year services, um, differently? Um, so there could be a cost savings there. Um, contracted services, again, we're really looking at that and thinking about, we're paying this much for an outside person, can we do this in district? And if we can, what do we need to do with? So, we're looking carefully, we're talking, we're having conversations, we're talking with administrators as well, so, um, but I don't have an exact answer for you on here's what we can save right now.
I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for the questions.
On your referrals, um, for evaluations, are, are you seeing that coming from a specific grade, a specific school?
Um-
In general? I know that it had been a problem at some schools in the past.
I, I did not, and I can, like, break down the data even more for you. I didn't do that for the purposes of this. I will tell you that, the majority of the referrals are at the elementary level for a lot of reasons. We have three-year-olds that we're responsible for, so we get several, um, pre-K requests. Um, whether they're found eligible or not is a different story, and, and we do get lots through the elementary levels. It's a mix of grades. Um, my concern is when we're getting them at the secondary level. And so, one of the things we need to think about, if we're getting referrals at the secondary level, and, you know, we have our share. If you saw, we're at like fifty percent eligibility rate. Um, and there are lots of reasons we get requests for evaluations at the secondary level. Um, but my, my bigger concern is when we get them and they're found eligible, 'cause it means, what did we miss early on? That we maybe could have resolved as a deficit or a challenge before they hit the secondary level. So, those are things we need to look at. But I could, I could give you specific breakdowns, if you guys are interested in that.
I just didn't know if you had seen a trend. That's my question, really.
We could go into a world of special ed data and spend days looking at it. There, I mean, there's lots of different things in special ed that we need to look at and consider when we're making decisions. Um, and it's, there's a lot of data and deep diving into information.
And did you say there's four positions available for peers at the preschool right now?
We have, we have four, um, peers for that third classroom, and we have the potential for four more coming in. Um, yep, so we've been working on building a peer group for the incoming.
So, are you saying that if someone, if there's room for four more children to come in, or you're saying in the future, there'll be room for four more children?
Right now. So, where we sit right now, we, we, we could potentially, if all eight, like, you know, the four we have and the additional four, we could be filled with peer slots for the year. Um, the caveat to that is, it depends on how many days they want. So, we may have flexibility in adding more than just eight, if, if someone only wants two days or three days, so. Any other questions?
I just have a question. So, on your next steps, you talked about, uh, doing a, completing a root cause analysis on six folders. Have we done this before?
That you know of?
I, have, since you've been here? I mean, um, not that I'm aware of.
It was a good idea. I was just curious if we did it. And are you just picking them at random, or is there a strategy?
No, we're not, we're not picking them at random. We're gonna look at, um, some of the cases where, like, the, the, the reason they're going out is similar. So, um, we're not gonna look at the intensive students going out, because intensive needs students are going out for a reason. Um, we wanna look at students who are going to language-based learning disability programs, students who are going to therapeutic programs, because, again, that's linked to something that we're thinking we need more, um, a more deeper look in district at. Um, our, you know, literacy skill development at the young ages, and our social-emotional learning. And, um, in fact, the administrators, we're all getting together tomorrow morning to talk about social-emotional learning. What do we need? Like, what resis- resources do we have in district that we can use differently, and what do we need to add to enhance that piece for students? Again, it's about meeting the needs of, like, the whole child and every child in our district, and what we're seeing are more students coming in with more support needs around social-emotional and behavioral challenges as well. That's kind of increased as well, yeah.
And also, what is our tier-one approach? Is our tier-one approach working at the level that it should be in order to find those who truly have the disability, or are we just, our tier-one isn't quite ma- reaching it for everyone? So, that's-
Yeah.
Not necessarily in your spot, but that could be something you might identify in this review.
No.
Yeah.
And I think, I, I think what needs to be told and repeated that, um, the costs in special net, special ed are not, um, not at the issue of the special ed department alone. It's a district issue. It's, everybody in the district owns what's happening, because they're, for a variety of reasons, and, and, and the other pieces, they're all our kids. Um, so, we need to keep that in mind as well, as we're thinking about how we better support our students, but, yeah. Any others? Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk special ed, and, um, you know, if, if there's anything you didn't hear, but you're wondering, please let me know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
It's not awkward to leave, but you're always welcome to stay.
All right, so now, um, we have the October first enrollment data. Just give you a quick summary on it. Uh, our assessment enrollment, which is just our residential students, is up fifty students from last year. Of those fifty, thirty-nine are from Hamilton, and eleven are from Wenham. Uh, this has resulted, had, this has resulted in a zero-point-one-nine percent shift to Wenham. So, if you were to apply that to the current FY twenty budget, it would mean an approximate shift of fifty-six thousand dollars towards, uh, Wenham and away from Hamilton. Uh, in addition to that, we also have a total of twenty-five more school choice students and one less, uh, residential tuition in pre-K student. This brings the total increase to seventy-four students, uh, compared to last year. Uh, but as I said, the calculation is only assessed on the original fifty students. And this has been distributed to, uh, both towns on October thirtieth. Any questions? So, up next, um, on October thirtieth, I received an email from Carrie Gertz, official resigning from the school committee due to personal, uh, reasons. Excuse me. At this point, uh, we have actually contacted, uh, been in contact with, um, regional council just to go, figure out what the process needs to be, um, in replacing Carrie, and, um, just pull that up for a second. And we've been in touch with the, the town administration of Hamilton to begin the process. I know there was a little bit of confusion about who actually negotiates, um, or facilitates the process, and, you know, by the wording of the regional agreement, it, it appear, it, it's written that it appears that the town, uh, that the board member resided in, um, is in charge of initiating the search, but it is a joint committee. I actually spoke with, uh, Dr. Harvey about how, uh, we had handled this before, and he agreed that that was in line, um, but that he actually ended up taking the reins in conjunction with the town, um, i- in prior searches. So, um, so that process is already underway. He said that what he had done previously was just sort of begin the search process, and then try to find a date that works for everyone available, um, once we, if we get any interest from the community, um, to try and sort of go through the process of selecting a member. Excuse me, in my time here, I actually remember it's, it's sort of being a hard time when we, um, were looking at Wenham, that there was a, it took a few times of posting the position available. Um, but then, you know, eventually we ended up with Josh, and but then when it, it happened in Hamilton in my tenure here, um, there was actually a, a pretty decent, um, turnout, where we ended up getting Jean and first introduced to Carrie. Um, so hopefully this process will be pretty seamless. I hate to see Carrie go. Um, I hope that everything is okay for her at home. Um, and, you know, uh, she will, she will be missed here. She, I thank her for her service, uh, with her time on the committee. Moving forward, we do need to replace her, um-
Can we wrap up that discussion right there?
Can we go back?
Can we ra- go back to that? So, is, is Dr. Kuchenberger going to send out a message or a call for letters of interest, and shouldn't, should we establish a date by which we're hoping that those will come in, so that we can then, you know, not leave it open like that, like?
Right, so, uh-
Because we would all ideally want to appoint someone before the beginning of the year, so that they can be part of the budget process from day one.
'Cause we've always had a date listed, and I was actually the chair when we did the search for Hamilton with Jean, and we had a date-
We did the search for Wanamasa.
Well, that, okay, yeah.
So, the question is why? I don't understand why there's all this, like, ambiguity. We just need to send out something, give a date, and see what happens.
There's, I, I don't understand what's ambiguous about it.
Well, the le-
Well, the, the, we got an email, and it seemed to have come that the town clerk was gonna write the memo. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering why the process got changed from what, instead of us, the schools initiating it, why is the town of Hamilton initiating the memo? And who's taking in, we need to announce this to everybody, who's taking in the applications? Is it the, Dr. Kuchenberger, the schools, the chair, or the town? What are we doing?
So, well, the reason we went about this is in reviewing the regional agreement, the wording is that the vacancy be filled by appointment from the Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the committee.
Not in conjunction, acting jointly.
Acting jointly.
So...
Means nobody's in power and not in power. My question is, why are we changing the process that we have used for every single appointment for the last decade, which is we send, we establish the date, we send out the notice, we receive the letters of interest, we find a joint, like, why are we waiting for Hamilton to have another meeting, do it? Like, I don't understand why we're doing it differently.
Because there's actually no continu- continuity of any of the key figures involved.
Both Sean Farrell and Jeff Hubbard were on the Board of Selectmen in Hamilton when Jean was appointed. You, myself, Stacy, were on this committee when Jean was appointed. Why are we doing a different process?
So what's different about the process, other than that we inform the town of Hamilton first?
Okay, so tonight, are we making an announcement for, we're accepting letters of interest and a date by which they are to be received, and that they are to be delivered to the superintendent? Because that is the process that has been used for every search for the last decade.
I am comfortable in saying that we are looking for people to send letters of interest in joining, in joining the board, but I am not comfortable in giving a date without conferring with the town of Hamilton.
Why?
It's, it's an expiration.
Because if we're acting jointly, that would be us acting unilaterally.
So are we gonna have to have a joint meeting in order to make a joint decision about a date that's a deadline by which letters have to come in?
So, I think actually hearing back anything from the town of Hamilton would be prudent to actually saying that we are in this together.
So you're changing the process of what we've done for the last ten years?
No, I'm acting-
Because you can't make a decision, that you didn't know what happened, so you decide to go towards Hamilton?
I have no problem making a decision, but I went-
Great, then let's make a decision that letters have-
Acting jointly, we don't have the power to act unilaterally. It's in-
You write a memo saying, this is what happened. We're going to write, write a memo saying, this is, we, we would like these applications, and this. And then you hear for a response based on your memo saying there is an opening in the town of Hamilton for a school committee member.
So you write the memo to the town to get the response first, and then publicly announce it?
Fine, let's do it that way. So when is that gonna happen? When are we all gonna get together to decide on a deadline for when the applications are gonna be?
So why, there, there doesn't necessarily need to be a joint meeting to actually pick a date to actually, but there does need to be communication with the other governing body.
It seems like you don't know what's really going on. That's the problem.
Excuse me, I know exactly what's going on.
Then share it with us.
So I, what don't you understand?
There's no date, there's no information.
There's no date, because we haven't met, haven't gotten a, any communication with the town yet. We have to act jointly. We can't act unilaterally.
Correct, so how can we-
I don't know how to explain this any more clear.
But David, how can we act jointly if we're not all gonna get together? The only time we have ever acted jointly before is at the time of the appointment. We've never, I mean, what are we gonna do? Have people send in letters? Do we have to have a three-way meeting in order to pick a deadline for when the applications are due?
So according to Dr. Harvey, he did the organization itself, but he worked with the town administration on finding a date that would work for the Board of Selectmen.
For the meeting, not for the deadline for the applications. He worked with them for the date, for the meeting, not for the deadline for when the applications have to be in by.
The school committee has always done a deadline. We decided on a deadline of when to get it. We did not wait for a date with Hamilton on figuring out for that deadline. We have chosen a deadline, and we started the process. Then we got a date for what works to have a meeting after that deadline to meet. Once we find out how many applicants we have, and what date works for you, town of Hamilton, or Wenham, to meet. That's the way we've done it. And we did it in the past.
Feel free to make a motion.
You wanna do the motion, Michelle?
Um-
Sometimes you might.
Again, I can make it. I have a calendar to do that, though. What's the date of our next meeting? The next meeting is on the twentieth?
Twentieth.
And then the fourth.
Yes, and the eighteenth.
So I would move that we ask Dr. Kuchenberger to send out a message via whatever our communication process, is it called Aspen? And to notify the Board of Selectmen that we would be interested in accepting letters of interest to be on the committee. And that we set a deadline of December second to receive those letters of interest. And that we would instruct Dr. Kuchenberger to establish a date after, you know, December fourth, for us to get together with the Board of Selectmen to interview any potential candidates.
Second.
All those in favor?
No discussion.
No discussion, good. Discuss more.
Wait a minute, I just have a question. So we're setting a deadline for applicants, interested parties to submit their letter?
And hope we get one.
And hope we get one, or, or a couple people.
Or more of the most.
Yes. And that's what we've done in the past, too.
Because if you don't have a deadline, then you just wait forever, and-
And if you make it any closer to the holidays, people are not gonna respond. And we've had that issue, oh, back with Larry in six years. So we had an issue about six years ago with that, or seven.
And so we're just on a, I guess the reason why we're not waiting for Hamilton to give us their input is because we're on a tight deadline?
We've never, we've never had- We have to wait another two weeks until they have their next meeting. So then you'd put the deadline out. You wouldn't get the applicants until right before Christmas.
And then you're gonna lose some.
And if we're gonna have our budget workshop right after the first of the year, you want that person on the committee to be part of that. Otherwise, they're not informed, and it's too much to catch up on.
And this is what we've done in the past. It's really, you know, with either town, it's, we make a date of a deadline, and then after that, then we work with the towns to decide when they can make interviews. And then you interview the candidates of whoever applied or showed interest.
So the Board of Selectmen and, and Hamilton, do you think they'll be upset if we just set a date without asking them ahead of time?
I don't know, we haven't heard from them.
It's just the way that's been done in the past?
It's, well, when we set a memo, just-
Should we call the chair? I have his number. I'd be happy to call him.
Jean, what do you think? You're in Hamilton, and you have a relationship with them.
I think we should just-
Do you think they'll care if we set a deadline without discussing with them first?
I mean, this is what we've always done, and now we're changing the process. And I just think we're gonna extend it and get into the holidays.
That, my biggest concern is waiting is gonna ca- cause you to get a candidate after the budget has already been started.
I understand your reasoning on timing. What I don't agree with is acting unilaterally as a body, especially when, as a school committee, our entire goal this year is to work collaboratively with these towns.
We have been-
But then let me ask you this. Why wasn't this locked and loaded and ready to go for this meeting? Because we've had this letter for over a week.
So the email from the, I don't know what the communication is in the office. I can't speak for Dr. Kuchenberger on whether or not-
You said it's the two boards acting jointly. Why didn't you pick up the phone and call the board? Because it's the boards that are acting jointly, not the administrations that are acting jointly.
So, that's a good question.
Yeah, so, do you want Michelle to call Jeff Hubbard right now, so we can get approval? Because we can't wait for another two weeks to even start the process. Because then what, then you're gonna have to wait another month to get everything done. And that's the holidays, and then people are just gonna back out and not, we had this issue six years ago, when the school committee prolonged, bringing on, you know, making a deadline and prolonged it. People don't wanna deal with it in the holidays. And we're gonna lose candidates.
I don't think if you called Jeff now, he's gonna be able to speak on behalf of the board anyways.
We can text him. But, but, we don't need to have two boards get together to pick a deadline. I don't know why we can't. It's a school committee that needs a new member. And if we just make a deadline, and then we talk to them and say, this is a deadline, we put for, it's a deadline for an application, we're not going behind their backs. We are interviewing jointly and working on it together.
I understand, Stacy. I'm not rejecting to it. I would have said exactly the thing you did. Like, why don't you just put a date out there, and if they have a problem with it, they'll let us know. But at least we move, you know, you know, we can at least put, you know, one foot se- one foot forward. So I don't have a problem with it.
Aren't you gonna collaborate for the interview of the person?
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly, yeah. That's, we're totally gonna collaborate.
We can even go there if they want. They can get enough chairs around their table. We'll go up there.
The stronger argument is trying to get a candidate, applications as quick as possible, so to, to set us up for that.
I understand the timing.
Yeah. And at, at the risk of, of, you know, upsetting the, the, the Hamilton Board of Selectmen, I guess they, they might, we can explain to them that we're facing a tight deadline, so we took the initiative, but we are going to work with them on selecting a candidate.
Look, if, if they thought that we acted unilaterally, they'll, they will let us know. I, I have no doubt about that.
Oh, they definitely will.
So-
I just don't want them to-
Sort of put it out there and see if they react. If they don't, if they react, and they disagree with our approach, then they will let us know. If they don't-
Yep.
Then at least we, at least we moved it one step forward. So I don't think there's any particular harm in it.
Yeah. I just want them to know that we're conscious that if we do select a date now, it's not because we disregarded them as a, as a board. It was more, the, the priority is to get somebody on the board as quick as possible. I guess that's, I guess that's the stronger argument. And I, we can apologize ahead of time if we offend them. So we said, what was the date? You said the date.
December second.
December second, and make, after twelve-four, we'll make, um-
Well, that the meeting to consider that should be after twelve.
We will consider our meeting after twelve-four.
But she should make that arrangement, like-
Yes.
Soon.
Soon, yeah.
They're busy, too. I bet they're gonna have a big holiday party.
Yep.
But they're not gonna invite us, too, but we'll come if they do.
Do you want, so at that point, is there any reason why we're pushing out three weeks?
What do you mean?
So you said, blah, 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 blah.
I gave it four weeks for deadline, for applicants, because of the Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for your patience while I thought this through, because I just don't wanna upset the Board of Selectmen.
They're not gonna be upset.
But I also do think it's a priority to get somebody on here.
Yep. Should we call for a vote?
Yes. All those in favor? Or opposed? So, it's not that I disagree with you, you know, so, um... I said the chairs before. I actually was not paying attention and did not, the school committee goals.
Can I just ask, are, Vinny, are you gonna let Dr. Kuchenberger know what we've instructed her to do?
I was actually-
Or is someone here going to do that?
Reach out to them, or is someone from here reaching out? Obviously, it's Julie.
We've instructed her to send out a memo, and so that's, oh, you will let her know?
Yep.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Um, so, I'm sorry, I skipped right over the search firm finalists.
We're gonna do vice chair, though.
But we also nominate a vice chair.
I'm scribbling out all my stuff. I'm sorry. So now, at this point, we do need to appoint a new vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Bailey as vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Uh, any discussion?
Uh, I would accept the nomination.
You sound so enthused.
Well, it's required.
Yeah, you need to accept it.
So-
Jean, you were about to say something.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say that, you know, in the last, at least since I've been on the school committee, we've always tried to have a, um, split the chair and vice chair between the two towns, the Hamilton and Wenham. Just, you know, I'm saying we need, always need to do that, so it's certainly not protocol for the committee, but I just wanna put it out there, but-
Yeah, I know, we've done, we did that the last two years. And I think, really, with some of the, everything that's new, we need someone who really knows pro- protocols, knows a lot about how the meetings run. And also, Michelle has been a vice chair before, too. And so she really knows the workings of a school committee inside and out.
Oh, the other thing would be that you're the only remaining member from Hamilton.
Yes, I know. I would ask, I know, when I said that, I'm not looking for, I'm not fishing for the nomination. Yeah. I get it.
Um, any other discussions? So, all those in favor? All right, now.
A big reveal.
The search firm finalist reveal. The big reveal. So Michelle and I ended up reaching out to seven different search firms, and we ended up sending the request for quotes to four of them. The other three did not wanna send a quote, but at the end of the day, we only received two quotes back. So two of the firms we sent it to did not reply. At this point, we deemed both of them, both of the two firms, to be highly qualified. And I believe the committee would like to interview both the search firms, if that's correct. And at that point, you can either pick between the only two that we have.
Are you gonna let us know who they are?
Yeah, one was the NASDAQ and the MASC.
Yep.
Those are the two.
I actually knew about the MASC, because I happened to run into somebody. Said, I got it in just before I kept, left for the conference, so.
So if you want, I can reach out to them to set up interviews, or if you guys would like to do that?
I didn't think that's what we agreed, the process is gonna be, right?
That's what we did outline the process.
So Vinny and I's question was, do we wanna set up a meeting and have them come here, and have the whole committee interview them? Or do you want Vinny and I to do it? And we don't care. Well, we would come back with a recommendation. But we don't ca- the, the real reason to do it is to get to know the person that you would be working with through the process. So it seems like a good idea to have the whole committee, but it requires another meeting.
Right.
And in the past, the la- I shouldn't say the past, the last couple of times, we have interviewed in public here.
Oh, you have to, yeah.
No, the, as opposed to having two people. I'm just saying, the last two times-
Yes, we have.
We have done, and, oh, we interviewed the search, the firms-
The search firms.
At a meeting.
Yep.
Just so you know. Not to say we can't change it, I'm just saying the last two times.
Yeah.
We have.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, I'm comfortable with, with whatever recommendation you and Vinny would, would provide to the committee. That's, that's me personally. I am comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, my, my only thing would be, I understand the, the lift it is for you guys. You know, sort of take that burden on yourselves. You know, sort of take that burden on yourselves. I appreciate it, but I mean, it would expedite the process.
We're fine with it, we just.
Yeah.
We didn't wanna burden the committee with having another meeting, if that isn't what you wanted.
Yeah.
But we're, but we also don't wanna make the decision without the committee saying that's what they wanted to.
Right.
And I'm fine either way, you know, whether, what we didn't pass, and, you know, also letting you two come back with a recommendation, like we do with subcommittees, coming back with a recommendation for full committee approval.
Does this require a motion?
What?
Um, but yeah, you know, like I said, I, I definitely am fine with that. I just wanted to.
What?
You know, let you know that I do, I, I don't wanna volunteer your time for you.
Well, we either have to meet in this meeting to do it, or we have to meet together to do it.
If you're comfortable doing it, I'm very comfortable with you doing it.
Because we have to, so it's not, it's, it's, it's gonna be my time whether I meet with just Vinny or we all have our little get-together.
Right, in that case, I guess it's a bit easier for you to schedule with Vinny rather than with the group of us.
Sure.
Okay.
Would you like a motion?
So, yeah, please.
I move that the Hamilton and original school committee approve Vincent Leoni and Michelle Bailey to interview the finalists and come back with a recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you both.
So, up next, we do have the school committee goals on here that I don't understand fully why they're on. So I guess I'll open the table to any discussion on the goals.
So one of the, and I don't know if this is why it's on there, but one of the action steps has us doing a formative review of the superintendent by December 1st. So if we were going to actually do that, and also adopting the school committee protocols based on our self-assessment results, we would, you know, kinda need to have a process for doing that by our next meeting.
So these are the new DESI goals, correct, of the DESI superintendent evaluation?
Yeah, but it would be a formative, so it would be just, you know, what, you know, you wouldn't be doing the full evaluation because you wouldn't have expected her to meet all of the goals so far, but you would wanna just say like, okay, progress has been sufficient on this goal so far, progress has been sufficient on this goal so far, progress is where it's supposed to be so far.
The December, you have to remind me, we talked about the, the timeframe by which to give the formal, the formative assessment, December 1st, right? Why is?
Halfway through the term.
Halfway through the term.
And also to have it done prior to research.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea, I'm just wondering if it's how to go about this, to put one together, you know, and then, you know, have something that we can prove at next meeting, and then, you know, sort of get us two weeks to sort of put this together, and then another two weeks to get it done by that December, actually, no, that wouldn't.
Well, we'd need a process by which to do it, by the next meeting, so that we could then discuss it at the December 1st meeting.
December 1st, a meeting?
Or you know what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Summer 4th.
Yeah.
So, um.
Do formative assessments exist out there in, in the ether?
Now, also, and also, did, did we want, um, why can't I think of it? Dorothy to come back because she didn't finish going over the superintendent review, the new rubric, or not? I just want to throw that, because I just wanna remind you that last time.
Well, that, that's what I was asking, right, so, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, what you're saying is that's more of a summative review, so that we would need to do that?
That would be for the summative review. I mean, yes, and it, so, it might not be a bad idea to have a practice summit.
That's kind of what I would want.
Which is what this could be, because it would be a training for all of us on what it will look like in the end. It might not be a bad idea to, to kinda look at it like that, but, um, yeah, if we wanted to have Dorothy just come and talk about, you know, what you would fill out, we could do that, I, you know, I don't know.
And it seems like it's already there, right, and, and why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, it's just, we just need to instruct her that she needs to provide us the information by a certain time, so that we can complete it by a certain time.
Who is her, Dorothy?
No, Julie, because we wouldn't necessarily have evidence of whatever.
Yeah, so help, let me ask, let me, maybe ask everybody here, wait, how binding do we feel this formative assessment to be? Binding in a, at least term, right?
You mean?
I guess my thing is, I don't want this to, I mean, it's halfway into the term.
Yeah.
She's still learning us. I don't want this to prematurely inhibit, or I don't know what the right word is, you know, like.
I don't think that you would give a rating.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking, because I, because it's like, you know, she clearly would not have completed many of the goals.
Right, because she had track to meet the goals.
Yeah.
Right, and, and, and so I think that we're a table full of educators, so we, I know we understand what a, the difference between a formative and a summative assessment is, and whether or not that's clear to everybody outside of this table.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't want this to.
No, it's a very good point, right?
It's a very good point.
Is that like, you know, this is the quiz to see where we're going, it's not the unit exam?
Yeah.
You know, so that, that is important clarification to make.
We also, we, we would know how we would use it, right, which may not be, but it's gonna be done in a public setting, so it may not be interpreted that way.
Yeah.
Right, and, and again, because we are all very sensitive about how our message is carried to the general public, I just wanna make sure that we're thinking through, like, you know, and I'm not saying we don't wanna necessarily do that, but I wanna make sure that we're being thoughtful about what we're, you know, like, what, what tool we're actually using, how we're gonna evaluate the, you know, I don't know.
I'm laughing because I'm suddenly seeing Michelle's argument a month ago of, okay, well, are we allowing ourselves enough time to do this properly? Right, I think Michelle saw the writing on the wall ahead of all of us in that, okay, so if we wanna do this to be fair, right, we wanna make sure that we're putting together a review that is, is based on the progress that we feel that should be, have been made at six months, as opposed to a year-end sort of assessment. So, the question is, can we get that done in time, in two weeks, to make the December 1st deadline a reality? And, and, and so, you know, I, I think now I'm hearing more what you were saying, you know, because we, we do wanna be echoable here. We, we wanna make sure that we're, we're fair in the assessment.
And I don't think December 1st, or whatever it would be, the 4th, is necessary, but I think we should do it before we get applications rolling in here.
So I do too. I, no, no, I do too, but it's a site.
Remind me again when we, when we would set the timetable for getting applications for the super?
So that's not, so like February.
April, right?
I thought it was like February, March.
February.
February and March.
Yeah, because I think we're gonna be holding the community meetings in January.
And the community meetings are in January timeframe, and then we would have a report, and then a brochure would be put together, and then at, the like, call would go out, probably in February sometime, so. But making an alarm that we need to be doing it, so that it gets done before then, needs to be on our radar now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So definitely, and, and so now I'm wondering, do we try and use the 20th to date to come up? The 20th being our next meeting, right?
Of November?
Yeah. Um, yeah, right, Thanksgiving's late this year.
Yeah.
Um. Do we want to try, see, I'm just trying to think of how to, I have the thought in my mind, can't get it out of my mouth. Put together. Do we want to work together, put together an assessment and sort of push that December 1st slash 4th date, maybe back a meeting?
I mean, now that I s-
I, I, I don't know if that was clear, because like I said, I'm trying to sort of put the thought process together as I go. Um, but where we can sort of come up with like, okay, here's a, you know, I, like, I know, I haven't even looked at the new superintendent assessment. I could honestly say that, you know what I mean, so to go in and.
Are we, are we tied, do we feel like we wanna use that?
No, that's, that's the other thing too, is like, do we wanna, but it's hard saying we do or we don't, for me anyway, without having seen it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it either, honestly.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should have Dorothy come back and run.
I think, I think that's what, I think that's what we're gonna, yeah.
That's why I was suggesting, because.
And then, maybe we don't, maybe we don't do this by December 1st, but by December 1st, we decide how we're gonna do it?
Yeah.
And after I said out loud, like, we wanna get it done before the application started rolling in, it made me think, you know, I'd be really comfortable with doing it right after we saw a budget, um, because that would be something that I would want to include in some sort of an idea like that. But we, we need to do this soon, because we have to tell her by March 1st if she's staying.
Right, that's what I was just saying to Jean.
So, we need to have some sort of feedback mechanism to base that sort of decision on.
Right.
I get it.
Yeah, all right, so let's see if we can.
Yeah, pardon me also, it was like, I want her to, I want, I want her to be able to, her and Vinny to be able to focus on the budget, because that's like the, you know, it's like, we have a whole bunch of other things going on.
This has been such a busy year. I mean, between the new hires.
With that?
What?
I, I, I don't want her, this is.
I'm sure she's collected evidence already, that's like.
Trust me, I, this is, it's her personality, she's got.
She's got her evidence.
Oh, yeah, she has, she has all the information. She, she's like the ever-ready bunny, just works like 24/7.
Are, are we going to rate on all the standards in the?
Maybe, no, I don't, I don't know, maybe.
Because there's, you know, there's the four standards.
So what are, so what are we saying?
I think we're saying we want Dorothy to come back and train us on the rubric for an hour or 40 minutes, maybe?
40 minutes would be better, honestly.
Yeah, I'm thinking 40 minutes.
Just attention span, I'm just thinking about it.
40 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, 40 minutes.
And then not, not, and then not tie, not be tied to the December 1st, right, but we, but our directional, directionally, we wanna be able to have some kind of formative assessment of Dr. Kukunberger, like, around March timeframe, late February?
I think, I think that March is too late.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking mid-January.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanna put it out there.
But we should have an idea of what we're gonna do by December.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I get it, yeah.
So are we talking about maybe Dorothy coming like December 4th?
Should we have Dorothy come December 4th?
Um. Is that the first meeting in December?
That's, yeah.
Do you want me to call her and ask her between the two dates, November?
Sure, if you want, I was just gonna shoot her an email, let's see if she was.
Oh, great, yeah, so, yeah, between November 20th and.
Or December 4th, if you can make one of those.
While you're doing that, I will say for the rest of the goals, for goal number three, I have to clean up, or at least I, on behalf of the Capital Financial Planning Subcommittee, need to clean up our, our bit. Because we, we had decided a couple of other things after our last meeting, so.
That, I had it in the minutes, it just, um.
Yeah.
Didn't get it in here. I didn't know I had to get it in here. I didn't look in, in time to get them, because we haven't approved those minutes, but it was what we discussed.
Yeah, I think Janelle had asked me, like, do we wanna put in a new draft of information, I just totally blanked on.
So, I'd, and that, this part, I didn't pay attention, that's what she was talking about. I was only concentrating on the letter.
Yeah, 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 so, anyway.
So Ms. Presser will come, because I'm looking through the standards and all the subcategories. She'll come in and tell us which ones are fair to focus on for formative assessment for.
Well, I hope that would help us to pick that.
Yeah, because there's a, this, it's dense.
It's dense.
And we wanna be fair.
Okay, done that.
Yep. Standard three, community engagement, very good.
Okay, do we wanna move on? Because it's getting late, David. We're at Capital Finance Planning Committee.
All right, uh, we can move on to the Capital Finance Planning Committee. We gotta prepare a letter for the MSBA.
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we, just give you a brief rundown of what we talked about. We had a presentation by Tom Geary with regard to his analysis of the capital needs. We had a couple of members of the Hamilton Capital Committee attend that one as well. We had a good discussion with them about the overall district capital needs, and then also a subsequent conversation about the TERF project. We had also talked about, about, Tom, Tom had suggested, Tom Geary had suggested that we, as a committee, submit a, a letter to the MSBA, sort of reinforcing our desire to, to pursue some funding from them with regard to the Cutler and with the SOIs.
Does, is that common practice?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't.
It wasn't necessarily common practice, Tom said, but he, he suggested it to make sure that they understood that we are very interested in moving forward to the next.
Yeah, I mean, when I saw this in the packet, I, I like the idea of it, then I'm like, you know, it's one of those things where.
It was Tom Geary who wrote the letter and decided that that would be a good idea that, you know, might help us to move to the next level.
Yeah, and I, I don't see it hurting, but then you just, you know, sometimes you wonder.
Yeah.
When you have that job interview, do you keep calling the HR guy?
Yeah, right, right.
They don't. Right.
You don't, I know, but I don't think there's, I, I don't, well, I mean, I don't know, I haven't worked with the MSBA. I was gonna say, I don't see any harm in it, but I don't know if I can say that statement either, really. I thi, I think that, um, I don't know, I think we just, just, you certainly wanna reinforce that we, we wanna definitely pursue something with the, I mean, after the tour of the schools and after what Tom's list is.
No, I, I love the letter, I love the idea of it. Like I said, that was my only, you know, that's a little devil's advocate, you know, it's my only turn.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good question.
Yeah.
It also gives Tom a reason to call them.
Yeah, I mean, it's new.
Sometimes you need a reason to call if you send the letter.
Yeah.
So, is there a letter here for us to sign somewhere?
Yes, I did print out a copy, they asked me to have everyone sign.
So one last thing, is that, as that letter circulates, is, so I just wanna let the committee know that we, we did host, the Subcommittee did host on October 28th, some of the board members, SLUG board, and the FinComs to sort of set norms with regard to our budget procedures moving forward. I thought it was a good, healthy conversation.
It was October 29th, sorry, I don't wanna confuse people.
Oh, okay, oh, what did I say?
Tuesday, October 29th, you said October 28th.
Oh, okay.
Just so anybody watching.
Yeah, yeah, no, sorry. So, in my opinion, I thought it was a good conversation. Yeah, so what we, thank you, completely unprepared, like, as usual. So, the norms that we agreed to was to take an inquiry stance, be hard on the content and soft on the people, share the air, or step up, then step back, be kind, specific, and honest, and assume positive intent. So we all, at least the representatives around the town, around the, around the group, committed to that. So we had someone from the Hamilton Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and then Wyndham FinCom. I don't think anybody from the Wyndham Board, SLUG Board, but.
And was it supposed to be the whole board, or just the chair of the board?
And the town administrators, the town managers as well. It was, we, we reached out to the, to the SLUG boards and the FinComs and just sort of asked.
So it was anybody on the board?
Yeah.
I think it wa, but, so this is what we needed aside going to the next one, is it was a little confusing, because some, I got a reply back that they thought it was, the way it was told to them by the Wyndhams, by Anthony, was it was the chair that was, only the chair is allowed to come. So I think we need to open up the communication of that everybody's allowed, but at the table, it might be so-and-so, but everybody else is allowed to be there, however we wanna do it, it just, I think we need to be a little bit more clear whether it's for everybody to. It just, I think we need to be a little bit more clear whether it's for everybody to attend or the chairs only or the chairs at the table and everybody else in the audience, however we decide to do it. But it was a little confusion because I got some comments saying, no, I was told only the chair.
Okay, all right, that's a good point. Yep.
So.
We can certainly move forward.
No one from the Wyndham Board of Selectmen was there?
Nobody.
No.
Okay.
So.
There's only three of them, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I think.
Two finance directors.
Yeah, so that's nice.
Yeah, but we are, it's part of our budget process, we are, you know, we will have another joint.
Were there presentations that night?
The board was down that night.
Well, Julie, Julie did a presentation mostly talking about norms. No data was presented.
They didn't bring anything to any performance?
It was for that.
I took a picture of it, but it was just norms and I think.
Is that fine? I just wasn't sure if they brought anything.
Yeah, no, no, that was it.
Are we going to vote to approve this letter?
I, I moved that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee vote to approve the MSBA letter regarding our statement of interest for both Cutler and Winthrop.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's, what's, no, what's this letter asking for?
It's just stating we're still interested in.
It's stating we're interested.
Interested in what?
Changed.
The SOI, that we want to move forward with the SOI of Cutler and Winthrop. That's all it's stating.
Even though there's been a change in administration, we're still really interested in.
But the statement of interest is asking for what?
So.
Funding.
Funding.
Funding for Cutler and Winthrop to see what they set the next level. And since the SOI was written and presented and given to the MSBA, we have changed administration.
Okay.
It was felt that.
Okay, I got it.
We should do that.
Got it.
Sorry.
Nope, thank you. Thank you.
We, I don't know, we have to vote, we have to make sure we're all set. So, all those in favor? If you're unanimous. I, I just want to let you know Dorothy already got back to me, said November 24th for her.
Okay.
She's awesome.
So, she's up partying down the stage.
I'm sure she is. It's free drinks night, you know? Or Healy's tomorrow, lunch.
I think, actually, I think drink night's tomorrow.
If Dr. Kuckenberger doesn't read this before she sees that.
Policy is nothing to report. We met, we've covered some sections and we'll try and get some for the next meeting.
Then move on to the consent agenda.
And it's just vouchers, right?
Okay, ask if anybody, you have to ask if anybody wants to remove anything.
Wants to remove anything from the consent agenda.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda as stated. And there can be no changes.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, topic for the next meeting, November 20th is the next meeting. And then Dorothy coming in.
And then there's that workshop by the leadership team, right?
Oh, leadership team workshop.
So. So, then my question is, should we have Dorothy come at 6:30? Because I bet the leadership team wants to start at seven.
Yeah, I think we should have Dorothy at 6:30 if we could.
You see that, we might not have Jean.
So, then the other option is to make sure that the leadership team knows not to come until 7:45.
Yeah.
Or that Dorothy doesn't come until nine.
Which is a little late for her.
It's kind of a strange thing, but.
Well, she has written materials. I can review the materials and I don't want to hold you guys up for.
Yeah.
And if we tape it, I mean, you can see the materials and watch it if you wanted to, but.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm hoping. It's not too intense.
Okay, I have two other things to add possibly. Do we want to address the email that we had gone as a follow-up for Marty Cook? For the football field? And sorry, I just said the football field. And the second thing is, when reviewing the minutes from 2006, November of 2016 with that were added, when I was reviewing based on, you know, appointment, I noticed that the committee had said that in three years or when the powers and Sullivan contract was up, that we should review it and get three offers in. Because in the, three years ago, we did not get that.
But when I just asked them, when they were just here, they said that they, their contract was good for another year. So, that's weird.
Is this in regards to the audit?
Yeah.
Yes.
You have an option for a one-year extension.
And did they?
Oh, so it's up?
It's technically up.
Oh, when I asked him that, that's not what I understood.
So.
Team option.
So, based on three years ago, that committee had suggested unanimously to, the next time we come out.
To seek quotes.
To seek three quotes.
Or whatever you can get.
Or whatever you can get. So, I'm just saying, based on just reading those minutes, that from, it was right around November of 2016, three years ago, that it would be up, so.
When would we have to tell them we want to exercise the option?
Of the one year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think there was a, there was a deadline.
Okay.
I'll review it for you.
Okay.
I'll send you that.
For an RFQ, no, RFP.
RFQ.
They're going to be a Q because they're.
RF, something.
All right, anything else?
Want to be on the committee? Send us an RFI interest, request for interest.
I move to adjourn at 10:16.
Second.
All those in favor?